Well, good morning. Today is June 14, 2018, and this is the Thurston County Board of Health. And today we have a special meeting that we've asked for today. And so to her right is Dr. Wood, the health officer for Lewis and Thurston County. And to her right is Romero Chavez, the county manager. So with that in mind, I'll call the meeting to order and ask the board if there's a motion to approve today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for the special board of health meeting, June 14, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Is there a motion for the board meeting minutes for April 10, 2018, the work session summaries, and for April 3rd and 10th, and May 1st, 7th, 8th, and 14th for the board meeting minutes?
Yes, I move to approve the meeting minutes from April 10, 2018, and acceptance of the work session summaries from April 3rd and April 10, 2018, and May 1, May 7, and May 8, and May 14, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second and stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. So the next item we have on today's agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the board. And I'll ask Lydia, she's going to put the three-minute piece up there, and while I do the House rules. So there is a shiny sheet still in the back, and for those who have not signed in, it's a first-come, first-served, but if you wish, if you change your mind, or if I forgot to put you on this list, I'll call you up forward by showing, by raising your hand. But we do it by three minutes. You come to the podium and kind of state your name, first name and last name for the record, and generally where you're at in the county. I don't need to know a specific address. And then I just kind of go down the list, and we go through each one, one by one, like I said there. So the first person I have is Alan Rogers. Is that Alan Rogers? There you go, sir. Come on up. How you doing? Hey, how you doing, sir? It's good to see you again.
Alan Rogers. I've lived in Olympia.
Can you do me a small favor and lift the mic up just a tad so we can hear everything you have to say? All right.
Gooder?
You bet, better, yeah. You have the floor. Go ahead.
Nice to see you guys. Hope to see you again this year at the NAMI picnics.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good, good.
And really what we're talking about is socialized housing, as we have an epidemic of homelessness. It's at crisis levels. And the house, we don't have enough housing. We really do not have enough housing. We have thousands, if not tens of thousands of people renting rooms because they cannot afford homes of their own. We have thousands, if not tens of thousands of people renting rooms because they cannot afford their rent, they cannot afford their mortgages. This is a crisis that's going on across the country, but it's, I see it in my community. I've been watching it in my community grow for the last few years. I know that the fair market rates that are set by HUDs are being exceeded by 20, 30, 40, 50 percent. I talked to a gentleman this morning who was renting a two-bedroom house at 150 percent of the fair market rates, and I said, "How do you justify this?" "Well, I have granite countertops I just put in." It's a two-bedroom, one-bath house. How do you do this? It's everywhere. It's devastating. People like me, I'm on a fixed, I'm lucky, I'm on a fixed income. I'm living in a garage. I have running water. I have a toilet. I feel really lucky I have this. I've taken in two people who have the same disabilities I have, or worse. And together, we have enough money to pay the $1,500 bills that we have every month. We pay our rent, we pay the bills, and we have nothing to live on. It's a struggle. We've recently been approved to be on the HARP's program and the long-term supported housing, and they allow us to go up to 120 percent of fair market rents. Nobody will let us in. Everybody's charging more than fair market rents. What can we do? Well, I have an idea. The Tom Water Development LLC owns most of what used to be the Tom Water Brewery. A very nice gentleman named, let me bring him up, Patel Chandhala, out of, let me bring that up, out of, check. Nope, not that one. I love technology.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, he's out of California. And he owns hundreds of millions of dollars, if not billions of dollars, of hotels around the world. And the brewery is a great investment, and has been sitting empty since they bought it.
Yeah.
Socialized housing.
Thank you so much for your words today, Alan.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the list, I have Susan Davenport. Is Susan there? Hi, Susan, how are you? Come on up. Just kind of tell me where you're from in the county, and you have, can you bring the mic down just a tad? There you go.
I live in Olympia, Washington. I'm on the west side. I've lived here for over 40 years. I'm here with two hats. I'm an in-home therapist with the Institute for Family Development. We work with, we're contracted to the Children's Administration, and I also am on the board of the Thurston Housing Land Trust, which is newly formed and has a recently democratically-elected tripartite board. And one of the people at our meeting yesterday is one of our potential Leeses of the land trust, who's having to move out of shag apartments because his fixed income, along with his wife, is not enough for the raised rents, the recently raised rents, and he and his wife are moving into a fifth wheel. So we hope to create permanently affordable housing over time for the community, and that's a long-term solution, but we hope to contribute to that. As an in-home therapist, I work with vulnerable families, and a lot of them are working, poor families, and even moderate-income families. And what I have noticed is that they are becoming homeless because the rents are raised, and then not able to rent subsequent housing. So they were housed, they are put out of their housing by the raised rents, and then they are essentially permanently homeless, for now. So I also am wanting to speak on behalf of the opioid crisis, that I would hope when the task force is formed, is that you ensure persons on the task force that are looking at those most vulnerable families, and particularly the families with young children, in ensuring the safety for those young children. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. So the next person I have on the list is Mary Watt. Mary, are you here? There you go. Come on up, Mary.
Hello, how's that?
Now, we got to bring it down just a little bit, the microphone. Can you bring the microphone down?
Down a little.
There you go, perfect.
How are we doing now?
Perfect. Go ahead. You have the floor. You bet.
My name is Mary Watt, and I was born in Olympia at the old St. Peter's Hospital, and we moved to Shelton when I was seven years old. My mother was the Mason County Public Health Nurse, which I'm very proud of. And in 1984, I left Washington and moved to Arizona to get my master's degree in library science. And left 1984, came back here to Washington in 2014, and back in Olympia in 2016, and I was shocked to see the houseless crisis here, and very saddened. And these are brothers and sisters, our neighbors, and I could be next there, as the other folks have mentioned, the cost of rent, as I'm living on social security and a little bit more. So I have $1,400 a month, and right now, half my expenses go to rent and utilities. So that leaves food and everything else, it's very, very tight. And every time I've had to move, it's, the rents got higher. And so, you know, it's people like me who are going to be houseless next. So we really am very, very happy that you folks are considering this resolution. It's very tragic. Most of these people are not on drugs. They're not bad people. They're maybe just people that haven't had the opportunities that, for instance, I have, having educated parents who took good care of me, sent me to college. And I just want to thank you folks so much for considering this, and I really hope you will pass it, and we can help these folks in the businesses downtown. I understand that they don't want the houseless around, and honestly, I think the houseless would rather be living in a safe place themselves. And for women, and I too, I was, I don't have any children, but I will speak up for the families with the young children, and how difficult it is for them to make ends meet. And it's, of course, being 65, I've seen the change in my lifetime, and it's, of course, staggering. None of us expected anything to happen like what has with cutting out all the social safety nets and such. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and speaking today, ma'am. So next, I have Andrew Saturn. Is Andrew Saturn here? Hello, sir, how you doing? There you go. Bring it just, there you go. We want to make sure we hear you. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Andrew Saturn, I live in District 1 Thurston County. I just want to share some quick facts. There's a lot of people here, so I'll try to be quick. Opiate use disorder is the number-one cause of preventable death in America today. Every year, more people die from opiate overdose than from car accidents and gun violence. So that's like a Vietnam War happening every single year. The people who, that just counts people who've died, that doesn't count people currently addicted, or in treatment, or in recovery. It doesn't count related statistics, for example, hepatitis C, other infections spread by needles, things like that. There's a 100-person waitlist at the only opiate treatment program in Thurston County right now. Overdose reversal medication like Narcan continues to be unaffordable in limited supply in our county. It's estimated that over 1 percent of the overall population of the county, that's about 3,000 people, have opiate use disorder today. Opiate use disorder is a public health crisis. It's the crisis of our time, and I ask that you please treat it as such. Let me see here. And then in terms of houselessness, it's also occurring crisis everywhere in the country, including our state. There's very few or no shelters available. The regional, regional issues with housing affordability are just exacerbating this issue. Some people are one emergency away from not being able to pay their rent. So I was just in three other states over the past month. That's New York, Ohio, Pennsylvania. I was in Washington, DC as well. None of these places have the same visible homeless problem that we have, and that's because they fund shelters. They have a housing-first policy. These aren't wealthy areas. They're similar to the areas that we're in right now. So houselessness isn't necessarily related to drug use. So although these issues can be correlated, and it's good that they're both being discussed, houselessness and opiate use disorder, for example, are not the exact same thing, but the county should be a strong leader in addressing both, and declaring an emergency, and being a leader, and a regional leader in an approach that is cost-effective and successful. And I just want to add also, there's other areas, for example Olympia, considering more kind of market-based trickle-down approaches to housing. I think we need to go the other direction and look at the cost of housing, and actually ensure that affordable housing is the solution, not just more housing, because that only actually just builds more unaffordable housing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. Next I have on the list is Renata Rollins. Renata, how you doing? Hello, Renata.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. It's really good to be here. My name's Renata Rollins. I'm a member of the Olympia City Council, and of course, I live in Olympia, on the east side, close to downtown. And I'm just here speaking as an individual council member, because this is near and dear to my heart. For years before I joined the council, I worked in street outreach primarily in downtown Olympia, and I won't list the facts, because I know that you and your staff are well aware of the crisis level that we're at. And I just want to say I'm really encouraged to see both the resolution declaring homelessness a public health crisis, as well as the opioid crisis resolution. And particularly, I want to touch on, in the homelessness and public health crisis resolution, the issue of hiring a homeless, potentially hiring a homeless response coordinator. When we, the city, took, decided to go that direction, I was frankly a little skeptical, just thinking, oh, one more, you know, government department to take this on, but wow, I mean, in five weeks, Colin DeForest, whom you all, I think, must know, has just done incredible work in getting our organization better aligned to address the needs of our community. Of course, this is a need throughout the Thurston County community, and it's one that has a ripple effect. Having done street outreach for a number of years, sometimes you start to frankly almost take for granted how bad things are out there, and I'm glad there's a lot of folks here who can speak for themselves on what that's actually like to live in. But I will say, I was startled a couple months ago to read an article about someone who does, whose work is international poverty abatement, and they're not, they're not an American. And when they came to America and saw what was going on in our communities, they were shocked by international standards about what people are living in. And that has a ripple effect on the entire community. And I also want to speak on behalf of the constituents of mine that we hear from every day who are running businesses in that kind of an environment. It's, of course, very hard to live and try to survive amidst a public health crisis. It's also hard to try to have your business survive amidst a public health crisis, and try to invite customers down to an area that may be unclean and unsafe. You have a lot of partners in this work, and I'm just, again, really, really excited and encouraged at the shift that I see going on in our entire region, and look forward to more working together. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Yeah, thank you for your words, Renata. All righty. Next, I have Phoenix Wendt. Is Phoenix here?
Phoenix, thank you.
You bet. Hello.
Hello. Thank you very much for taking up the banner for this crisis. It is an emergency. My name is Phoenix Wendt. I am the ambassador peacekeeper for the houseless. I am here to explain to you, we do need to declare a humanitarian state of emergency for the houseless. And as I've already stated, you, Governor Jay Inslee, along with the People's Declaration as of 6/6/2018, voted of five houseless and five housies, declare a humanitarian state of emergency for the houseless for the state of Washington. All of Washington will be under this humanitarian state of emergency, and it will be implemented with kindness and compassion. Ambassadors will be given full emergency powers into that process, along with leaders of the houseless. All mayors will declare a humanitarian state of emergency in their cities. Municipal codes that have caused the systemic problems be placed as lowest priorities immediately. Whereas, grant state reserve emergency cash flow to each city as needed for land purchase for shelters, setup of shelters for implementation of shelters as needed. Also, to set up emergency aid shelters, you, as the city, need to set up emergency aid shelters immediately to stem this crisis flow. Whereas, declare that houseless deserve to have a place to be. Everywhere they go, they are told they have to leave. They are getting swept. They are getting destroyed. They are our family. Houseless have the right of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, thus to have land, roof overhead, power, clean water, garbage pickup, sanitation, toilets and showers, healthy food, access to health care, access to services. So as to whereas, declare that all existing camps, shelters on private lands, public lands, state lands, et cetera, are now humanitarian aid stations. And all sweeps will stop immediately by any governmental agencies, city and state police, military, ICE. There will be a sanctuary city, as it has been voted on in the past. We are Olympia. We are to be the state capital. We are to set the precedent as of today. Whereas, we also will enact legislation to make the homeless a protected class of citizens. So please see that we will be announcing the Houseless Bill of Rights, which is the third bill of rights for this country. And if it is not done, I am going to the governor, and we will have a state of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Phoenix, for your words today. Next, I have on the list Mr. Ty Gundle. Oh, sorry, Ty. So sorry. There you go.
How's that?
Pretty good.
Okay. My name is Ty Gundle. I live in Olympia and have for five years. I'm an organizer with a group called Just Housing. Just Housing is a grassroots group that does advocacy for the basic human rights and needs of folks that are housed in our community. We, for the past two years, have had a huge focus on encampments and legal encampments, and necessarily, we've done a lot of work building relationships with the existing encampments in our county. As you all know, there are hundreds of people that literally have nowhere else to go and nowhere else to live but outdoors, and these hundreds of people right now have no access to basic sanitation services like garbage pickup, bathrooms, these basic things that we all really take for granted in the housed world. So based on what I've seen in my work, there's no doubt in my mind that what we're dealing with is a public health and safety crisis. When it comes to shelter alone, I just want to share a story from somebody that was in an encampment. He's a 65-year-old man that I've known for years. He was living, and he has an oxygen tank. He has pneumonia. He carries this oxygen tank around with him everywhere he goes, and he's living in the middle, he was living in the middle of the woods in a tent with mold. We, his health was deteriorating really quickly. We helped move him into a shed. We built a little garden shed out there for him. This was a little bit better, but he, his health was still worsening, and eventually, emergency services had to be called for him, and because he was out in the middle of the woods, they couldn't even bring a stretcher. So just this, in the middle of the night, emergency services having to walk this 65-year-old man from the middle of the woods who couldn't breathe. That was just a really powerful moment for me, to see what that means as far as a public health emergency. Also, our group does a lot of work. As I said, there's no garbage services for encampments, and we can't talk about garbage, we can't talk about encampments in our county and our city without talking about issues like garbage and needles, human waste. These are all things that people talk about, especially those that are neighbors of encampments. And we've always said, I mean, it's, this isn't so much about people, it's people not having access to these services. They can't dispose the garbage that they have. Our group has done some work in the past year to do community cleanups. This is all volunteer-based, it's all donation-based for what we can do. But just in the few months we've been able to do this, we've been able to have a big impact in the encampments that we've worked with. And what we're doing, though, is very limited by the amount of, like, funding, people power that we have. The city of Olympia, as you all know too, is also taking some great actions. There are so many community groups and organizations that have incredible projects, and all of them are dealing with the same issue of not enough people, not enough funding. We all need more support, and that's one of the reasons why I'm so happy and encouraged to see you guys considering this emergency declaration, because I think that with more support and more people at the table, this really is a regional crisis. And if we want these solutions to really get us to where we want to be, we need everybody at the table. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you for your work and your words. So next I have on the list is Danny Caden.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Danny Caden. I'm the executive director of Interfaith Works. For 45 years, we have been a diverse coalition of faith communities in Thurston County, and for most of that time, we've been directly engaged in homeless services. It's been a long path, and there is still a long path still to tread, but I'm here to offer words of thanks and a pledge. First, simple thanks to you for your leadership, and also to the skillful staff of Thurston County who work on this every day. This is an important moment. We realize it's not just symbolic words. You are making an important step today, and in the work leading up to this, and I want to thank you as commissioners and your whole team for doing so. The moment has come for this particular resolution, and we applaud this. It lifts our hearts across our faith community coalition, and it spurs us to do stronger and harder work from this point on. And words in the form of a pledge. We, in the faith communities, have worked faithfully for many decades, and we're all cognizant of standing on the shoulders of people before us who took a lot of risks working on these difficult issues when no one understood and had any resources to address homelessness and the housing crisis that has been going on for a long time. And so I do always keep in mind those that came before us, clergy, lay leaders, and ordinary congregants who put a lot of faithful time and heart into this work. We will continue that in good faith. Interfaith Works is here to pledge to be a partner regardless of the bumps, the hills and valleys that we face in dealing with this issue, working with local government, working with all the sectors of the community, small business, developers, activists, of course, faith communities, local government planners. We together make up a great team. We are a powerful community in terms of skills and commitment, and we bring a lot of tools to the table. We know what needs to be done. We have to coordinate, and with Thurston County taking the lead, it will lift our whole community and better everyone in the community, all the sectors working together. So that's our pledge, and I'll let others speak on their behalf, but I know all the people that we work with day in and day out, including yesterday's housing action team meeting, there's a spirit of teamwork, and if you can continue to support that in tangible and intangible ways, the success rate is really going to be there. So thank you for that, and we'll see you at the table.
Don't leave, Danny. We want to thank you immensely. A lot of people know that you're leaving the community for a while. We are going to miss you dearly, and we thank you for your service and your kind words.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. I appreciate that.
All righty. So the next person I have is Mr., or Pat Holm. Sorry. Hello, Pat, how are you?
Yes. Greetings. Thank you for calling this meeting. We definitely are in the place where we need an emergency. We need the county to get on board with the city, and, you know, this is a large problem. It's a large problem all over the United States. You've heard these people talk, and I totally agree with all of them, all of the people struggling to find housing that is becoming more and more expensive. And as I went to visit my son this spring in Oakland, they were just having sweeps. I mean, it was horrible. And to know that, you know, my daughter-in-law and so forth have been forced to move because they raise rents like $1,000 a month, I mean, it's just incredible what's happening all over the country with housing becoming so unaffordable. So I, a group of friends got together last night and discussed various options to what could be done, a longer, I mean, this emergency is important, and people will be working together to work on that, but we've also got to think of the longer term. And I think what Europe has called "social housing" is a very important concept, because it doesn't group just the poor together. Like in Vienna, they have, 80 percent of the housing in the city of Vienna in Austria is social housing. And 80 percent is a lot. And so you have people of all walks of life living together in, not in big, you know, going to buildings with no air and no beauty. These are beautiful. Housing, they could be designed in such a way that they would be attractive to everyone, and there would be a mix, and we'd have more community life, and things would be better. Social housing, we need to think about that. We need to think about the empty land that is available in Thurston County and the city, and start building some of these social housing, and also in Sweden and Finland, and I know in Norway where my relatives are from, you know, the government helped, my uncle was able to, or my cousin, was able to get a house, because they had like seven, you know, different designs. This was back in '75 or something. And they had the housing designs that the government would help them, you know, achieve housing. So everybody is housed in Europe, in these social, more socialized countries where we care about, people care about each other, and nobody likes to see somebody suffering on the street. That's a very unpleasant thing. And so we got to start thinking ahead about what makes sense, and it's, and if the city and the county the city and the county and government agencies own things-
Go ahead, finish your thoughts.
I'm sorry. Then they can be paid for, and then, you know, things can come, you know, you can keep on building more social housing and so on, but thank you.
Thank you for your words. Okay, that completes the signing list. Just by showing a hand, is there anyone that would like to come to the podium to speak and address the board? No, seeing no one? Okay, yeah, sir. So, just give me your first and last name, and generally where you're from the county, huh?
My name's Doug McCacken. I live in Olympia. I had the privilege of helping on one of the Just Housing cleanups in an area called The Jungle. I only spent two six-hour days in the same condition that my countrymen live in. In that period of time, I managed to contract pneumonia. However, I got to go home and lay in a warm bed and go to my healthcare provider and get my medicine. Somebody else in the same conditions would get pneumonia and then go to sleep under a blue tarp. I thanked God I had a warm bed. It is a crisis in that we have a public agency already to deal with human waste. We already have a public agency to deal with garbage. I don't believe that their mission statement says only for those that have money in their pocket. We need to have those services directed towards the unhoused to protect the health of all the members of our community. Remember, public health put an end to cholera, not medicine. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today, sir. Is there anyone else? I cannot do another three minutes. Sorry, Phoenix, so-
I apologize. As the ambassador for the House List, I am stating as an individual, as a choselier, as an ambassador, I am here to state to you, I need to explain that there is a procedure that we have already voted on, and we are wanting to vote that forward as that it will be voted in mandatory state.
Phoenix, can you give it to the county manager? He'll take it, and then we'll proceed forward with the public hearing, the public procedure we have here, okay?
I'll talk to the media.
No. Thank you. I'm the ambassador. I have the right to tell the public. Please don't-
I think the prosecutor wants to say something.
Phoenix.
I am now going to state this.
Phoenix.
As the ambassador of the House List-
Phoenix, please let me carry on the public hearing here.
I would like to actually state it as this. I thank you for being courageous, for doing this situation, but as the ambassador, I must courageously step forward and start stating that we need to have this shelters immediately. The, the state of emergency is in desperate and critical need. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to come forward to address the board? Seeing no one? Okay, we're going to proceed with the agenda. So, next on the agenda is, did you have something, Mr. Tunheim? Did you want to come to the board? Did you want to come to the podium?
I can now, or I can wait until the opioid, the agenda item regarding the opioid.
If you don't mind, we'll wait to that. That way, it kind of couches the same way. Is that all right?
Sure.
Sure, okay, true. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is the departmental item. It's the Tobacco and Vapor Product Prevention in Thurston County and beyond. And today, we have Mr. Chris Hawkins and Kateri Wimsit to give us a, just a quick overview of what this is about.
I'm going to just quickly introduce our main presenter here is Kateri Wimsit. She's an education outreach specialist with the Health Department. I'm program manager, and I'm going to help get her slideshow going. Thank you.
Good morning, Kateri Wimsit from Public Health. In today's presentation, I'll be doing two things. First, give you an overview of the Tobacco and Vapor Product Prevention Project here in Thurston County and the region, and secondly, I'm going to be highlighting two projects from this project going on in Thurston County. So, as Chris pulls up my slide here, I will get started. Tobacco use is the cause, the number-one cause of preventable death in Washington and in the United States. Tobacco is responsible for more than 480,000 people every year who die, more than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined.
Go ahead.
Chris, can I have you forward me? In Thurston County, when we look at these numbers, this next slide, please, Chris? Thank you, will give us a view of what we look at for our rates here in Thurston County. So, we have about 14% of Thurston County adults that smoke cigarettes. Thank you. I'll try that again. Excuse me. Yeah, I'm going to need some technical assistance, clearly.
Teamwork.
That's right, teamwork. All right. Thank you. That'll work. Thank you. Thanks to everybody.
You bet.
This next slide, if I can get it to forward.
Reinforcement.
Thank you. That'd be great. I appreciate it.
There we go. That's the one we're looking for.
All right. Show some of the rates here in Thurston County. So, the adult rates are on the top, the youth rates are in the bottom. What we know for youth is addiction starts young, and when we look at adult tobacco users, we know that over 90% started before age 18. We also know that 99% started before age 25. So, that's why a focus on youth is so very important with this. Nicotine is the drug that causes tobacco and e-cigarettes to become addictive, and because the youth brain is still growing, developing, introducing an addictive substance to a youth is really highly important to stop. So, the good thing about tobacco work is that it has been identified as a CDC-winnable battle, and what that means is that public health has prioritized it as something that we have the knowledge and the tools to make a significant progress in a relatively short timeframe. And so, we are part of a region-wide project, the Cascade Pacific Regional Partnership, that involves seven counties and basically puts together strategies to work on this problem. Our county partners are Mason, Lewis, Grace Harbor, Pacific, Cowlets, and Waukaiah Com One of our regional projects is we are currently working on a voluntary basis with our local public health food inspectors across the region and offering to any business that is interested this type of decal. We know that this helps lower risk for folks indoors, especially for children and those with chronic illnesses. A second regional project that we're working on is a social media campaign that's focused on parents and key leaders that talks about tobacco and vapes. This is launching very soon, and we ask for you to look on it, for it on our social media sites for Thurston County Public Health. Finally, here in Thurston County, we are working on two projects, Smoke and Vape-Free Parks, Presales, and Trails policy work, as you know, and along with that, we are also researching different options for the Board of Health to consider regarding strengthening the Smoking in Public Places law to include vaping. People hear more on these projects.
SIPP, Smoking in Public Places?
That is exactly what that is.
Sure, good.
Thank you. That's all I have for you today. Thank you for the time to be up here.
You bet. Any questions?
No, I don't.
Any comment? Thank you, Kateri. You bet. So, the next item we have on the department list is the Approval for Aquatic Nuisance Weed Control Prescription for Parrot Feather, and we have Art Starry and Timothy Wilson
Good morning. I'm Art Starry. I'm the Environmental Health Division Director for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I'm here with Tim Wilson, who's the Noxious Weed and Lakes Manager for Thurston County Public Works. And so, well, as Commissioner Blake indicated, we're here today to ask you to approve a prescription for the control of parrot feather. And while it sounds like a bird sort of thing, what it really is, is it's a noxious weed that's showing up in Thurston County waters, and I think the, in your board packet, there's pictures of it. And what happens, and for the folks here and others who might be watching this, there it is, one of the things you get to do as the Board of Health is that you get to approve proposals or use, what we call prescriptions, for the use of pesticides in surface waters in Thurston County. And with this noxious weed, it's something that needs to be controlled, and so what the process is, it is, is that the pesticide proposal is developed by the department or the agency that's, that's needing to control the pest. It's then reviewed by the Pest and Vegetation Management Coordinator, Patrick Soderbergh, and then something called the Pest and Vegetation Management Advisory Committee. And after they've reviewed it, then it comes before you for final approval. In this particular case, the prescription's been reviewed by all those different folks, and they all recommend it for approval. So, that's, that's really the, kind of the nuts and bolts. It's a business process. As the Board of Health, again, your, your obligation is to review it and, and look at it against the county Pest and Vegetation Management Policy, and that's something that actually was adopted in 1989. It's been amended a couple of times, most recently in 2014. And so, it describes the process, and it also describes the, the findings that you need to make in order to approve the prescription, which I can review really quickly. And, and those things are that the pest and vegetation problems have been assessed and control is deemed necessary. In this case, it's a noxious weed, so the state government actually says this is something that we need to control. It's not really an option, and Tim can tell more about that. The use of the pesticide is a necessary element of an integrated Pest and Vegetation Management prescription, which means that we've looked at the different options available for controlling it, and this is one that's considered to be appropriate while also proposing the least risk to public health and the environment. And that's actually the last part of this, too. The last thing that you need to look at is that the risk to public health, groundwater, and the environment is determined to be minimal. And so, that's actually the work that's been done thus far by the previous reviewers, and they think this is an appropriate prescription for you to consider and approve. So, that's it. In a nutshell, what I wanted to do is turn things over to Tim. He's the, again, the, the Lakes Manager for the county. He's the help person who developed, did most of the work to develop the prescription, so he can tell you about the problem and, and why it needs to be controlled. So, thank you.
Hello, Tim.
Thank you, Art. Good morning, Commissioners. So, as Art mentioned, the prescription before you is for an aquatic noxious weed, parrot feather. It is a plant-specific prescription, so we wrote it to be able to use it throughout the county if needed, but we would utilize it immediately on a large habitat restoration project we've had going on the Chehalis River for a number of years. For this particular plant, we were successful in acquiring a couple of grants, state grants to control it, and we'd like to begin that right away. We are working with a University of Washington research scientist to also do some herbicide efficacy test plots out there to ensure that we're using not just a safe herbicide, but something that's, has good efficacy as well. So, some of the problems with parrot feather, some of the problems with parrot feather, the main problem is the reduction of dissolved oxygen within the system, which is very important to fish habitat, native, native plant displacement, beneficial plant displacement, and then just navigation issues in some areas which affects recreation. So, with that, we are requesting that you approve the prescription and add it, add it to our list.
Any questions, Tim or Art?
I guess I would just ask, that's been approved by the Department of Ecology at Washington State?
It has.
Okay.
Any comments?
I just want to reiterate, Tim, thank you very much for the presentation that, that we talked about earlier, and you provided copies in the, the presentation that's embedded, that the parrot feather, the parrot feather sounds, oh, it's a parrot feather.
Right.
And when you look at it, I think a Christmas, but when you look at it in this kind of a fashion, and hearing Director Environmental, Director of Environmental Health Division, Art Starry, say the state mandates, we don't have an option. It's a noxious weed, needs to be taken out.
That's correct.
And the prescription that, that you are proposing is as safe as it can be, and we're going to take this thing out.
That's correct. Thank you.
Good, thank you. That's what we're here.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the aquatic nuisance weed control prescription for a parrot feather.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the aquatic nuisance weed control prescription for parrot feather. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Got to have a little humor. So, I'm, can I ask Shanny Jenkins to come up next? She has a very good story that kind of gives the, set the stage for the next two resolutions that we're going to move into, and I just wanted to hear, we wanted to hear her portion of it, and then, go ahead. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Shanny Jenkins. I'm a longtime resident of Olympia. I raised my two boys, Ryan and Kyle Brinton, in the South Bay community, and worked at the elementary school that they attended. My boys were raised in a good family home with a lot of love. They loved school and were involved in sports, and they had a large network of friends. In high school, my son Kyle and some of his friends tried the pharmaceutical drug OxyContin, and it changed his brain. I watched so many of his friends go down the same path, which was heartbreaking. Kyle did not struggle with mental illness growing up. Once his brain changed from opioids, the addiction became his mental illness. Kyle struggled with this disease for 10 years, and no one hated the disease, excuse me, more than Kyle himself. He was also so ashamed and hated how his disease hurt his family. He wanted so bad to have his normal life back. Kyle became a successful fisherman in the Bering Sea, where he found peace and loved the sea, until he came home, and so many triggers would pull him down that dark hole again. Kyle spent a year in prison for drugs. He woke up to a place where he knew he didn't belong, but it saved his life. He was in a treatment program there and was ready for life when he was released. Kyle's dad and I did some research on Vivitrol, and the day after he was released, we took him to Seattle and had an implant put in his stomach. The Vivitrol was a lifesaver. It stopped his brain from having anxiety and stopped the triggers. Kyle was on the program for a year, but because we were paying out of pocket, he decided he did not want to be on the drug forever and decided to get off of it. We monitored him, and he was doing well for a year and a half. Kyle was attending Bates Technical College and would have graduated this March 2018 with the HVAC certification. He was in a loving relationship with Brittany, right here, a stepdad to her son Brody, and found out he was going to be a new father in April. Kyle was loving life and happier than he'd ever been. On October 7th, 2017, Kyle's brain was hijacked. He ran into an old friend, smoked heroin, and died instantly. His fiancee, Brittany, found Kyle at their kitchen table and tried to resuscitate him, but he had already passed. To watch the coroner zip up the body bag, closed on my son, was the hardest thing I've ever gone through. Kyle was not only my son, but he was my best friend. Kyle was always open and honest about his battle, which allowed us to be open and honest. I was proud of my son, and he fought the battle the best he could. His son Knox Kyle, this is Knox right here, was born April 22nd, 2018. Knox is a spitting image of his father, and I hope and pray he has the heart and soul of his dad. It's heartbreaking, though, to know that Kyle will never get a chance to hold him. Shortly after Kyle passed, I sat down beside Governor Inslee while he declared the opioid epidemic a public health crisis. His bill did not pass with the Senate, but it started us talking and discussing the epidemic. We are losing beautiful generation of young people, and their families feel helpless. So many parents live with a fear every day of getting the phone call that I got in October. We are losing our children. So many families are burying their children in secrecy because they feel so ashamed. We have to talk about it. We have to let these people know that we care and give them hope. We have to change the stigma and take away the shame. In October of last year, it was declared that drug overdoses killed more Americans than the Vietnam War. Our school nurses are mandated to teach AIDS and HIV classes, but they're not teaching children about opioids. I'm on several Facebook groups of families that lost loved ones. Every single day, people are posting. It's just out of control. I talk about addiction to everyone I can. A lot of people will open up and talk to me about their family member or their friend, but guaranteed, we're all touched by addiction in one way or another. I appreciate you letting me come here today and share my story, my beautiful son Kyle.
You bet. Thank you for coming today and sharing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shanny.
Okay, so with that in mind, we'll move to the item number six, which is the Resolution Addressing the Opioid Epidemic and Declare a Public Health Crisis. I have two people, I'm going to have to do introductions. Start off with the Director of Public Health, Social Services, Shelley Slaughter, and then I'll turn to Prosecutor Attorney Tunheim, and then we'll read the, read the resolution. Shelley?
Thank you, Shanny, for your really beautiful story. It's beautiful to see your family here today, baby. So, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you as well. I'm here to ask you, to ask to you and recommend the adoption of the proposed resolution, H-1-2018, declaring the opioid epidemic a public health crisis. So far this decade in Thurston County, more than 120 people have died of an overdose. But we also know there are countless others in our community suffering from an opioid use disorder and who are at risk of dying that we may not know about, and we can do something. something to help and prevent these deaths from happening. This has been declared a national crisis, a state crisis, and I believe it's time to declare a local Thurston County crisis. This is devastating individuals and families' lives every single day, as we just so eloquently There's not one person here in this room, and anyone watching, that has not been touched by this crisis in some way, including myself. I personally lost one of my very close family members and dear friends to an opioid overdose, so it's very personal for me as well. This impacts students in schools, babies in utero and at birth, parents, grandparents, friends, employers, and many more. And anyone can be a victim to developing an opioid addiction. Opioid use disorders are life-threatening chronic medical conditions. There is not one of us that is immune to this disease, but there are steps that we are taking now, and we can do more. At Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, we operate our Syringe Exchange Program, and we distribute naloxone to those in need. We've been participating in our Regional Accountable Community of Health Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Opioid Work Group to develop a regional response plan. The nation and the state have a plan, but Thurston County does not yet have a plan that's specific to our individual and local needs. This proposed resolution would order the convening of a task force. Prosecutor Toonheim, who I believe is going to speak in a moment, has agreed to co-chair this with me. Because this isn't just an issue that public health can solve alone, we need our criminal justice partners, our healthcare partners, our EMS partners, our nonprofits, to be working together. The proposed plan will be driven by community members as part of our Thurston Thrives Community Health Initiative, and will aim to prevent opioid misuse and over-prescribing, expanding treatment, working to educate and expand naloxone, which can reverse an overdose and save lives, increase our data collection efforts so we can better understand how this is impacting our local community, and respond and reduce the stigma, and identify our own local strategies to end this epidemic. Thank you.
You bet, thank you for that. So, next, Prosecutor Toonheim, if you'd like to come to the podium and give a little elaboration on the whole task force and the opioid crisis for a standing.
Thank you. I'm sure it was close to be here to really support the proclamation that you're, or the resolution that you're considering today. As Shelley was talking about, this is an issue that has reached the level of crisis, both locally and at the state level. And I've been pretty involved in the work at the state level in terms of addressing the opioid issue. In fact, I met Shanny for the first time back when we both were involved in the announcement of the governor's legislation and work plan, and since that time have been working on the state-level Criminal Justice Opioid Work Group. Just had a phone call this morning, in fact, where that group met, and we're finalizing the state opioid work plan. But it is time now to really start to take a look at this at the local level and figure out how we respond to this in Thurston County, with Thurston County's needs. As Shelley said, she and I have agreed to convene an opioid, local opioid task force to now start to address this, and your resolution is a great way to kick that off. And I will also tell you that there's a really strong partnership forming between the Public Health Department, the Prosecutor's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and the County Coroner's Office to convene a countywide community summit sometime, hopefully in early August, where we'll bring many people together from the community to not only learn more about what this crisis is and what it means for Thurston County, but also start talking about what are the solutions and strategies that we want to take forward. I'm actually very excited about that partnership forming, and very excited about our, starting to look at this issue holistically, and really start working together in a synergistic way to address the problem. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about this, and thank you for taking this resolution up.
Yeah, sure. Any comments or questions or concerns?
No.
For Shelley or John?
I think enough's been said, and it's time we do something.
I do have a few comments, and I want to thank Shelley and you, John Toonheim, as well, for your efforts and your support and work on this. And I'm moved and encouraged by having a packed house today. We typically don't see that. So, I mean, this obviously expresses to me the elevation of this issue countywide, though I knew it existed. And based on Shelley's story of her son, I'm not sure, Shanny's story about her son, what that tells me is, reiterates for me that when you save an adult, you save a child. Because he has a baby boy here now with mom. And a lot of people don't really recognize that. And what kind of drives me nuts, but I'm going to work through it, is we're going to declare an opioid as a public health crisis, and just the word crisis, we have all kinds of crises in this community, throughout the country, and when you hear crisis, when everything's a crisis, I think a lot of people become immune to the word, and they just hear, okay, another crisis. But I also heard this morning, emergency, and Mary said in her public comment, she used the word tragedy, and it is an emergency, and it is tragic. But we need to use the word crisis for this epidemic. So, I thank you for your involvement, and our county involvement, and Olympia's involvement as well in this, and I look forward to the summit, so we can actually move and do something to save lives.
Yeah, I'd like to echo all those same comments, but applaud you and Shelley for addressing this head-on, and with the Board of Health also, and support. And I'd ask the community as a whole to be involved in this in whatever capacity that they can serve and be able to put an end to this, and it really is a community-wide effort, so. And then I'd ask to come back here live on TV and some other form to kind of give updates as we go along, so that everybody can be in the same marching mode in terms of being able to resolve some of this and work together collaboratively. So, thank you very much, and thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, I'd be happy to do that, thank you.
All right. So with that in mind, I'll ask Commissioner Hutchins to read the resolution, it's kind of long, so just be patient with him, and then we'll make a motion.
This is Resolution Number H-1-2018, a resolution declaring the opioid epidemic a public health crisis in Thurston County, and directing the Director of Thurston Public Health and Social Services Department to convene a Thurston County opioid response task force that will create a response plan for approval by the Thurston County Board of Health. Whereas the Thurston County Board of Health, under the authority of RCW 70.05.060, has supervision over all matters pertaining to the preservation of life and health of the people within its jurisdiction, and whereas Washington State and Thurston County are currently experiencing an opioid epidemic leading to preventable deaths involving prescription opioids and heroin, and whereas opioids prescribed and taken in the United States, Washington State, and Thurston County have led to a nationwide epidemic of opioid misuse, abuse, dependency, overdoses, and opioid-related deaths, and whereas the opioid epidemic affects our communities, devastates families, and overwhelms our healthcare, social services, law enforcement, and judicial services and systems, and whereas Thurston County ranks 15th out of 39 counties in Washington State for the rate of opioid-related hospitalizations, and 29th out of 39 counties for opioid-related deaths in Washington State, and whereas opioid use disorders are life-threatening chronic medical conditions that destroy lives, and whereas there is a need to increase education about and improve access to medications that saves lives by reversing overdoses and treatments that support recovery, and whereas the Thurston County Board of Health seeks to address practices and conditions that cause a threat to the public's health and the safety and welfare of our community related to the opioid epidemic. Now, therefore, the Board of Health of Thurston County, State of Washington, does resolve Section 1. The opioid epidemic is declared a public health crisis in Thurston County. Section 2, the Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services is directed to prioritize deploying available resources and seeking new resources and strategies to address the opioid epidemic by working together with others to form and convene a Thurston County opioid response task force to develop and implement a community-driven response plan. The response plan shall address the opioid epidemic and shall include implementation strategies. The proposed response plan shall be submitted to the Board of Public Health for approval. Once the response plan is approved, the Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services will report to the Board of Health on a biannual basis the progress of implementing this plan. And Section 3, the response plan shall include but not be limited to the following goals. Goal number 1, preventing opioid misuse, abuse, and dependency by improving prescribing practices. Goal 2, treating opioid abuse and dependence through expanded access to treatment. Goal number 3, preventing deaths from overdose by working to educate and expand the distribution of naloxone to individuals who use heroin, and educating individuals about the signs of an overdose. Goal 4, using existing data and enhancing data collection efforts to detect opioid and other illicit drug misuse and abuse, and scientific evidence to inform the selection of strategies. And goal number 5, identifying and implementing innovative strategies that reduce the risk of overdose to individuals and diverse communities that are disproportionately impacted by the opioid epidemic and reduce stigma. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Any comments or questions?
No, I think we're all in this together, and it's about time we do something about it.
All righty. Is there a motion?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the resolution declaring an opioid epidemic a public health crisis.
Second.
It's been moved in second, as stated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Last one tool in the toolbox, the other one we have is a resolution declaring homelessness as a public health crisis in Thurston County. And again, I'll turn to Director Shelley Slaughter to give us a little bit of background.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm also here to recommend and request your adoption of the proposed resolution, H-2-2018, declaring homelessness a public health crisis. As you know, each year, we conduct an annual homeless census. We did so this year in partnership with City of Olympia. Our full report has just been finalized, and we have identified in that survey 835 people without housing. Nearly 40% were unsheltered, at serious risk of serious health issues and death. This is the highest rate of unsheltered that we have ever seen in our community. More than a third of these are families with children, and there were 1,670 homeless school children identified by OSPI in Thurston County last school year. We are still waiting for this year's results, but we expect that number two to have increased even further. 25%, that's a full quarter, cited domestic violence as their reason for becoming homeless. This is also a serious public health issue. We also saw a large racial disparity. All people of color make up 18% of our Thurston County population, nearly 30% of those without housing are people of color, and I believe this is a health equity issue that we need to address. Despite Thurston County's investments of $5.8 million annually and an incredible network of advocates, providers, and leaders, many of who are here today, homelessness and the cost of housing continue to rise in Thurston County, and this is impacting not only the health of individuals and families, but our entire county, across every single border. It's impacting our cities, our neighborhoods, our schools, businesses, social service agencies, faith organizations, healthcare facilities, our criminal justice system, and many more. I, myself, had the opportunity to be a guest and visit a local encampment, and I was deeply concerned about the health, safety, and sanitation that is a risk to human lives as well as our environment. When I spoke with the residents that were there, what I heard time and again was that housing was too expensive, that they wished that they had housing, and that they were really suffering from serious health conditions. There was, as when individuals spoke earlier during public comment, there were people just released from the emergency room, people with chronic health conditions, people with medical equipment, people without adequate storage for their food and medicine, they did not have adequate hand-washing facilities or safe drinking water. This is a very serious public health concern. Those without stable housing are also at least three times more likely to die early, and they suffer higher rates of long-term chronic illnesses and disease. I personally knew a wonderful woman who was in her mid-40s. She suffered from a chronic health condition, mental illness, and substance use disorder. Her name was Yolanda, some of you may know her here. She was found unresponsive on a downtown sidewalk earlier this year, and she died. It's an absolute public health crisis when you have people at risk of early mortality due to lack of housing and shelter, and they're dying on our streets. And in our wooded areas, in cars, our shelters are at absolute maximum capacity, and the numbers still continue to rise, and that exceeds our resources. Housing is essential to health. As you know, in a recent survey, as part of our strategic planning process in Thurston County, homelessness was cited as the top concern of our citizens. The Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council and Action Teams also identified this as a top priority and focus area. In response to this, I reorganized my department, Public Health and Social Services, and have formed the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. And we are prepared to take leadership on this issue and support all of our nonprofit partners that we fund, as well as work together with all of our local government partners in our region here, our local continuum of care, and the community members to make sure that homelessness in Thurston County is rare, brief, and one-time. I believe that we have a serious public health crisis, and we must take action, and I ask you to adopt this resolution today.
All righty. Any comments or questions to that? Gary? Okay. Any comments or questions?
I do have a comment, and that is, a few months ago, we did the point-in-time count, and I spent my time that day at the Community Youth Services. And since that time and between, well, over the last month and a half, I spent considerable time sitting and talking with a homeless man, a homeless man who was homeless and now is housed in an emergency shelter, and a young lady who was homeless and then went couch surfing and then threw Rosie's place with COYS, is saved, and now living a productive life. Very touching, because back in 1985, when I was assigned as the first walking patrol officer in downtown Olympia, I dealt with a lot of homelessness and a lot of kids that were homeless. And here we are, 33 years later, and now what's changed? It's now a crisis, it's now an epidemic, because not sufficient, well, for whatever reasons, it's now risen to this level, and it's disheartening. So, I'm very proud to be a part of this, and dang it, I don't want to do this in another 33 years, I'd like to see it in the next several years be considerably better than it is now. So I look forward to this, working with Olympia and such, and regionally, and addressing this dead gum, this crisis, use the word again, crisis, this emergency, this threat.
Dead gum.
Dead gum. You understand that word?
He's calm right now, I guess he's excited. Anything else?
No, that's enough.
All right. So I have a few comments, and so I'm going to kind of, it's been said many different ways, and I'm going to try to encapsulate why this is a crisis, to actually answer some of this. For the four-year
For the four years I've been a county commissioner, I've been fortunate enough to be able to be part of the Housing Action Team. And a lot of the nonprofits that are here in Thurston County that are absolutely God-sent because they are in the front line of keeping us from falling through, and I'll explain what the falling through means in a few minutes. But if you look back, and you've got to look way back to about 2007 and beyond, earlier than that, nationwide, we had an ample supply of housing, you might say. I mean, it's not that everybody was not suffering some element of homelessness, but there was more of a supply of housing than there was population of people at that time. And so that's where the whole conundrum came, where Fannie Mae debacle, and the applications were being processed faster and with hardly any oversight, and it caused the 2008 crisis where the housing dropped out of the bottom, fell through, and it kind of gave us a huge shock to our economy, as you can remember, right? Now, from 2009 on, it's flipped in terms of where housing, even today, and that's kind of why today we're doing this crisis, housing is a shortage, and we have a more supply of people, if you will. And so then it becomes a combative role, if you will, of people trying to seek housing. That's it in the overall scheme, a big picture piece there nationwide, but it does impact all the way down to Thurston County, and the Housing Action Team has realized that over the last four years. We've built several different tools to help resolve that. We're just putting them into motion, as you can imagine, but it takes almost four years. We built a pipeline, and we're introducing what we call the Housing Affordability Model, the HAM. I know that's a funny acronym, but these are some of the things we're trying to do in addition to all the other good workings going on out there with the nonprofits. And to speak to that, point-in-time count, I've been doing it for four years, and I've been volunteering as much as possible, as much as my schedule allows. And when you go to some of these assisted places, such as Salvation Army, Family Support Center, Sidewalk, what have you, and I've interviewed many, 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 and you'll find that it is because of that shortage of housing that we're talking about that causes many of that, much of that homelessness. And then it breaks up the family structure. Almost every person I've talked to, in one way or another, is seeking a family structure, not always blood-related family, what have you, in terms of sister, brother, but that's absolutely what they're looking for, but a community family as a whole. And that's really, really, really where the solution comes into play, is everyone in this county joining together to be able to reach out where you can to solve this. And the people sitting in this audience and listening on the TV, that's what it really takes, because those who are unfortunate and sitting or relying on a bed each and every night are looking for that care and love and graciousness to get them from where they're at to a thriving life in some way, form, shape, or other, just like maybe many others have. So that's kind of the picture painted. But considering that, we have that market portion of the housing, it's, and I'll speak to it in the sense of landlords and tenants right now. The ruling kind of goes, the rule kind of goes, the vacancy rate is small, meaning 1% to 2%. I mean, there's a very small inventory of open apartments and rentals throughout Thurston County and a lot of other places too, but I'm worried about Thurston County. And so what happens, that drives up the rate of rent per month, right? Because the landlords are doing their things as far as naming their prices. It's hard to go in there and tell you will do or shall lower your prices because it's part of a business piece for them. But at the same time, if you were to open that up, meaning from 1% to 2% to about 7% to 10%, then you have a larger inventory for people to select, and then there's more competition within that gap, if you see my hands right here in that little circle right there. That's what we're striving to do in the Housing Action Team, and many others out there are trying to reopen that up just a little bit. Because if you go beyond 10% to 12% to 14% or 15%, then you're going back to the other side of the spectrum, and you have that same problem we had back, say, prior to 2007 and what have you. So we're always looking for that medium there, if you will. And then the same way for market-rate housing versus incentivized housing. And I love my incentivized housing team. We're doing great and wonderful things, which I mentioned, the HAM is one of the tools that we just built. It's the same kind of problem set where the housing is at this level here, but the small inventory, and that way it drives up the price of the house, and then it causes the unaffordability, if you will. And then that's why we have to shift the affordable housing in some way to resolving or close the gap so that at least some people get some roof over their head. All that being said and done, that's kind of a different problem set. What falls out is what Shelley mentioned as far as the other things as far as the health concerns, and this is why today we wanted to address it from a health-concern, crisis piece there. There's another housing piece that needs to be addressed. I guarantee you that'll be addressed eventually. But this is a health concern, because when people are not healthy, they can't do, get on with their jobs and their house, growing families and what have you, and that's exactly what we want out of this Board of Health, out of this Director, Mr. Toonheim, the Sheriff, the coroner, everybody that's in leadership role, and every single person sitting in this room and on this TV needs to join in and help out. So I just really applaud us doing this for Thurston County and drawing some line in the sand and saying, we're going to take some sort of action. If nothing else, we're going to synergize and move forward with some meaningful, tangible steps to help out with the crisis we have now. I see my seatmate here waving me. He wants to say something. I know him very well. He's got something to say, but that's kind of what we're up against. Sorry for the long piece there, but that's my two cents.
Sir? Well, I just want to say that Danny made mention from Interfaith Works and things like, you know, the Salvation Army and how they're doing, and those 35 other nonprofit groups that work with us. We just passed this money through, I don't know, about $6 million or something, to these other groups, that they're the ones doing the work on the street every day and really need the accolades that go with this, because you're really making this happen. I will say that, kind of reflecting on Danny again, maybe there, but the grace of God go I, on both of these very important topics. I'll bet you there isn't anybody out there that is not touched in one fashion or another. And so I just, I'm glad we're moving forward to solve the problem. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion for the resolution? Oh, sorry.
Here we go.
County Manager.
I'd like to introduce for the record that we have received over 50 emails.
Five zero.
Five zero. And I will now be reading the content of each one of those emails, but 100% of those emails are encouraging you to approve this resolution.
Okay. I think we can do that.
No, I do have a comment. Because I read every one of them, too. Every one of them. And they're very respectful. So thank you for that.
That's very, very kind.
You ready? Yeah, this is the resolution. Bear with me. It's 20 pages long. I may have exaggerated. I think it's like three.
Wait one second. Wait a second. Wait a second. I've got to read the motion first.
Oh, wait, let me get to the motion.
Number seven.
Number seven.
There we go.
Wait a minute.
I think we're going to adopt.
I read it first, then we adopt it, yeah?
Okay. We do it with the mic.
Okay, here we go. Resolution number H-2-2018. A resolution declaring homelessness a public health crisis in Thurston County directing the Director of the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services to lead the response, committing support for community-wide efforts to reduce homelessness and resolving to convene the hazardous weather task force and implement the hazardous weather plan. Whereas homelessness is a national, state, regional, and local issue affecting all of Thurston County in both urban and rural areas, with the majority of those experiencing homelessness originating from Thurston County, and whereas homelessness has devastating effects on human lives and severe health, safety, social, economic, and environmental impacts on cities, towns, neighborhoods, families, schools, businesses, healthcare facilities, and social service agencies, and whereas the Thurston County Board of Health recognizes that many people seeking shelter, social services, transportation, and housing do so in urban areas where services and transportation are most accessible, and supports and joins the City of Olympia, which has the largest concentration of unsheltered residents, in working together and collaborating with all partners to find solutions, and whereas Thurston County, through the Public Health and Social Services Department, provides approximately $5.8 million each year to 35 nonprofit agencies that provide emergency shelter, coordinate entry, rental assistance, affordable housing, and other supportive services, and yet funding is inadequate to meet the growing population and demand. And whereas the Thurston County Board of Health recognizes the vital contributions of nonprofits, faith-based organizations, community groups, advocates, and private citizens who provide temporary, permanent, and supportive housing, and other social and health services to those in need utilizing best-practice approaches, and whereas, in a recent Thurston County survey conducted by Burke Consulting, homelessness was identified as the top concern and priority for citizens, and whereas, the cost of housing is rising, the vacancy rate for rental housing is nearing record lows, and there are not sufficient affordable housing in Thurston County, all of which contribute to growing homelessness along with economic and family instability factors, and whereas the number of people known to be experiencing homelessness in Thurston County on a given day has significantly risen in the past, with 835 persons counted in the annual point-in-time census, and whereas in 2017, there were 1,670 children who experienced homelessness in Thurston County public schools. I'm continuing.
I know. We got you.
38% of those experiencing homelessness are families with children and young adults. Children and families make up the majority of those without stable housing in our community. And whereas, domestic violence is also a serious public health issue that is the fourth-ranking cause of homelessness, with survivors fleeing domestic violence representing one-quarter of those experiencing homelessness in Thurston County. And whereas, 38% of those identified were unsheltered, living in outdoor places not fit for human habitation, including streets, parks, wooden areas, and cars, putting people at risk of serious health conditions, communicable diseases, and even death. And whereas, there are record numbers of people living in encampments where lack of access to drinking water, handwashing, toilets, proper food and medicine storage, and waste disposal poses a serious risk to all people and the environment. And whereas, physical health was the most commonly reported disability among those in our community experiencing homelessness, and people without housing have high rates of chronic physical and mental health conditions and are three times more likely to die early. Physical health complications commonly experienced by those without stable housing and shelter include hypothermia, injuries, chronic pain, musculoskeletal disorders, hunger, malnutrition, skin diseases, foot disorders, infectious diseases such as hepatitis A, B, and C, shingella, tuberculosis, influenza, immune disorders, HIV/AIDS, sexually transmitted diseases, dental problems, respiratory illnesses such as asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, RSV, pneumonia, hypertension, diabetes, cancer, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and other illnesses. And whereas, nearly one-third of people experiencing homelessness were people of color, which is disproportionate to the Thurston County population, indicating serious racial disparities that need to be addressed. And whereas, vulnerable populations such as those that are disabled and those that are suffering from substance abuse disorders and mental illnesses need supportive housing options that are currently not sufficient to meet the needs. And whereas, the Thurston County Board of Health seeks to address practices and conditions that cause a threat to the public health and the safety and welfare of our community. Now, therefore, the Board of Health of Thurston County, State of Washington, under the authority of RCW 70.05.060, resolves. Section 1. Homelessness declared a countywide public health crisis in Thurston County. Section 2. The Board of Health declares support for and solidarity with the City of Olympia and other municipalities' efforts to address homelessness in Thurston County. Section 3. The Administrator of the Board of Health, the Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, is directed to prioritize this issue through the newly-established Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention within the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Department, which will lead the county's role in response efforts and to designate available staff and available resources from OHHP, which is the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention, along with public health emergency preparedness, environmental health, and disease control and prevention, to work with other county departments, municipalities, nonprofits, healthcare facilities, and other community members to pursue targeted solutions that will prevent and reduce public health hazards associated with this crisis, such as improved hygiene, sanitation, vaccination, access to healthcare, and healthy shelter and housing. Section 4. The Board of Health further resolves to provide support and leadership in effective community-wide collaborative coordination, planning, and policy efforts to end this crisis, and to implement actions that will reduce the homelessness, increase affordable housing development, housing development opportunities, and address the health, safety, social, economic, and environmental impacts of homelessness through the Board of County Commissioners, the local Thurston County Continuum of Care, Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council, and Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team and subgroups. Section 5. The Board of Health will convene the hazardous waste, I'm sorry, the hazardous wealth, starting in. The Board of Health will convene the hazardous weather task force and implement a countywide hazardous weather Code Blue plan to prevent death and illness related to hazardous weather conditions for vulnerable, unsheltered populations. The Director of Public Health and Social Services is authorized to activate the Code Blue plan and to identify and allocate resources in partnership with nonprofits and local municipalities in order to increase shelter capacity and identify funding to support the activation of Code Blue as needed. Section 6. The period of November 1 through April 30 is declared the cold weather season to ensure those without housing have continuous access to available emergency shelter resources regardless of temperature. Section 7. The Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services is directed to prioritize this public health crisis by seeking approval from the Board of County Commissioners to hire a homeless response coordinator to serve the entire county and work within partnership with the City of Olympia homeless response coordinator and staff from other jurisdictions to implement actions recommended in the forthcoming Thurston County Homeless Housing Plan. And Section 8. The Board of Health further resolves to prioritize, evaluate, and take proactive steps to address the underlying causes of homelessness, including housing affordability, domestic violence, behavioral and physical health, and health equity concerns and solutions that reduce racial, gender, and ethnic disparities within the population of persons experiencing homelessness, and fully implement the approved fair housing plan. Section 10. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Amen.
You have any questions or comments?
I don't. We got you to do it.
Very good. Super exciting. So is there a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution declaring homelessness Amen.
Any questions or comments?
I don't. We're ready to do it.
Very, very good. Super exciting. So is there a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution declaring homelessness a public health crisis.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the resolution declaring homelessness as a public health crisis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. There we go. Very, very good. Okay, so.
Very happy to have all my march orders there.
Get busy.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is number, I'm going to switch to number nine and go straight to the Director's report.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief in the interest of time. It has been a very busy month for us, as it always is. Several of us just returned from the Washington State Public Health Officials Meeting, along with Dr. Wood, Art Sari, and other staff, where we met with 35 other local health jurisdictions, administrators, and public health leaders. And we discussed strengthening our relationships within the governmental health system, preparing for the upcoming legislative session, and raising the visibility of public health and foundational public health services that we provide. In August, I'll be bringing you further information on foundational public health services as we do gear up for a funding request from the Washington State Legislature this next session, in addition to what was allocated to support the public health system last year. Wasalbo, for those that may not know, is our local county voice at the state level for public health officials. I also met with the Secretary of Health, Dr. Weisman, and with other local health jurisdiction leaders this last month, and had the opportunity to attend a statewide meeting of leaders in the Washington State Department of Commerce to discuss federal funding and share our local priorities related to homelessness. At this same meeting, there was a conference on ending homelessness, and the focus was on addressing racial equity, which many of our local community members also attended that, and that will very much support the resolution that you just made. Next month, I will be attending the National Association of City and County Public Health Officials and looking forward to that. The National Association of City and County Public Health Officials, as you know, also granted us a small grant to help prepare us for applying for public health accreditation, which we plan to do. We're currently engaged in a quality improvement process, and I'll be giving you further reports on that coming soon. At the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance, our accountable community of health, we're preparing to apply for the Medicaid Transformation Waiver dollars to support opioids, chronic disease prevention, and maternal-child health. I also want to mention, in light of recent high-profile suicides in the national media, we're really concerned about our local suicide rates, as well as trends we see in Washington State and nationally. The Center for Disease Control recently reported suicide the leading cause of death in our nation. So hear that again, the leading cause of death in our nation is now suicide. It is the second-leading cause of death in Washington State. So we just want to take this opportunity to share the suicide rates from 1999 to 2016 increased in every state, including Washington, and our age-adjusted suicide rate was 15 deaths per 100,000, and the national was 13. And about half of all suicides in Washington are by firearms. So we just want to use this as an opportunity to encourage people to talk to someone if they're feeling depressed or considering suicide, and call the Suicide Lifeline at In our environmental health news, there are environmental health staff, Assistant Commissioner Edwards, to produce a Thurston County Connections Program that highlights water quality improvements in Henderson Inlet, and that show will be aired starting in mid-June 2018, and we want to direct our audience to look at the successes that we have had in water quality improvements, which resulted in a net gain of 366 acres of commercial shellfish harvesting area since 2005. And these gains have taken place despite an increase in population and development within the Henderson watershed. So thank you to Commissioner Edwards for your work on that, and we're very proud of our achievements in Henderson Inlet that we can share with the rest of our partners in the state, and also to our environmental health staff and other partners who work very hard on that. In vital records, we also had a very busy time, issued 330 birth certificates and 796 death certificates. Just want to remind people that they can get their birth certificates at 412 Lily Road, and if they're interested in getting an enhanced driver's license in the fall, which will be required, then they should come to Lily Road to get that. In sad news, I just want to take this moment to share that we suffered a terrible loss in our department, in our housing department. A beloved, wonderful woman named Deanna Lewis, she passed away last week. It's been a very difficult week for us, both in the county and in our Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention team. And I just ask that people keep Deanna and her family in their hearts during this difficult time, and want to publicly thank everyone for your support of our department. And with that, I will pass it over to Dr. Wood for her report.
Dr. Wood.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hold this. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Oh, lower down. Okay. Thank you very much. I wanted to let you know that unfortunately tuberculosis is still alive and well in the county, as we acquired a couple more individuals who have active pulmonary tuberculosis, and we, our staff are working on doing the directly observed therapy and coordinating care and contact tracing that goes along with those diagnoses. I, thanks to guidance from environmental health, got very interested in blood-led testing for pediatric patients, and could talk at length about that, but I will just state that that is a concern, and it also relates to housing and the age of housing. On emergency preparedness fronts, we continue to work with our partners, the tribes, in trying to coordinate, exercising mutual aid agreements, and also with our hospital partners in exercising evacuation, the scenario like a tsunami coming after an earthquake, and coastal hospitals having to evacuate to Thurston County. So, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Any questions of Shelley or the Doctor?
No, are we getting ready to wrap it up? Is that where your head is, sir?
Well, I want to make sure you get your thoughts out.
I guess I would. Oftentimes, people, I've been asked, "What are these pinwheels about?" I'm just going to mention it. Back in April, that was Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and I have to say, we can never get away from looking out for our kids. Those kids might only be 30% of our population, but they're 100% of our future, and everything we do up here is a direct reflection of where we're going in that regard. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Shelley, for all you do. I thought it was an excellent article in the paper on diabetes. Thank you for that. Very good article.
Thank you for your leadership, Shelley, and Dr. Wood, and everybody's been participating in this as far as the housing and homelessness. It's been a great tribute to what this county stands for. Remember, did you have any comments?
No.
Lydia, anything closing?
No.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the Board of Health Special Meeting of June 14, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn the Board of Health Special Meeting for June 14, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.